I do want to welcome you all to tonight's city council meeting. And I will be presiding in the absence of the mayor. And we do have Reverend Mitchell, and we're happy to have him here. He's going to lead us in our invocation and pledge. So would you all please stand?
Would you please bow with us? Our heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this day. It is another day that you have made, Lord. We are rejoicing, we are glad in it. We are thankful, Lord, that you have brought us together tonight in this occasion. We thank you for these city officials and for our city government, all of those who bear the responsibility of leading our city. We pray tonight for guidance, for wisdom, that you will enable them to make right decisions that will be right for all people. We pray, God, that you would intervene into our city government and that you would cause all things to work according to your will. We ask, Lord, that you would bless us as we go into this meeting. We ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will now call the roll. Mary Fraction? William Wilson? Jan Gladwell? Wayne Reynolds? Peggy Lou Singer? Robin Halbert? Larry Stiles? And Bob Jones. Your packets had a letter of resignation from Alderman Jones. And the Finance Committee recommended at their meeting that David Cross, who is the Alderman-elect and opposed, forward for position two, go ahead and be appointed to fill his position. So do I hear a motion in second to accept the resignation of Alderman Jones and to appoint David Cross as Alderman?
Make a motion.
Second.
Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? We welcome Alderman Cross. And I guess you can come up here and sit down. I don't think you just, I just think you can't vote yet. Okay. And if Judge Burnett comes, we'll go ahead and have her swear in Alderman Cross. The minutes of the previous meeting were received in your packets. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes as mailed? Do I have a motion in second to adopt the minutes? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? And Stiles?
Yes.
Departmental reports were received in your packet. Are there any questions or corrections concerning departmental reports? Do I hear a motion in second to adopt the departmental reports? Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? You have in your packets an ordinance setting the annual city auction. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance for its first reading? Okay, and I will read the ordinance. An ordinance providing for the auctioning of certain personal property and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Melbourne currently has personal property which is of no further use to the city and is depreciating in value. And whereas the city of Melbourne desires to auction the personal property to the highest bidder. Now therefore be it ordained by the Melbourne City Council, section one, that the city of Melbourne sells the following described personal property at public auction. 1986 Chevrolet pickup recycling truck VIN number 1GEDC14H2GF361008. 1998 GMC Sonoma truck, four cylinder VIN number 1GTCS1442WK523169. 1999 GMC Sonoma truck, six cylinder VIN number 1GTCS14XOXK516913. 2001 Chevrolet truck, Silverado X-Cab, six cylinder VIN number 2GCEC19W211129941. 2000 Wells Fargo, Wells Cargo, hmm. 12-foot enclosed trailer VIN number 1WC200E28Y2040519. 1995 homemade 24-foot gooseneck trailer, bill of sale only. 1978 International Trans Star Truck VIN number D2137HGB15773. 2007 Chevrolet Impala unit number 1 VIN number 2G14S55R779300300. 2007 Chevrolet Impala unit number 7 VIN number 2G1WS55R179298754. 2002 Ford Crown Victoria VIN number 2FAFP71WX2X137457. Trackhold bucket, parts washer, two light bars, parking stops, grapple claw, grinder, shop span, light poles, computers, monitors, and printers, surveillance cameras, time clock, small appliances including microwave, laminator, coffee maker, televisions, DVD player, video VHS recorder, vehicle record, video recorder, various other items including but not limited to cameras, office furniture, copy machines, power tools, and hand tools. Section two, that the city council directs the city of Melbourne to publish in the Melbourne Daily Record a notice of said sale for two consecutive weeks concerning the sale. Section three, that the city council directs that the sale should be conducted on the 24th day of April 2014 at 10 o'clock a.m. at the Street Department complex on Main Street, Melbourne, Arkansas. Section four, it is necessary that this ordinance shall become effective immediately in order to provide for the prompt sale of said personal property to defer any future depreciation of value. And an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate protection of the public peace, health, and safety shall take effect upon its passage and approval. Do I have a motion in second to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its second reading by title only?
Make a motion.
I have a motion in second. Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles?
Yes.
An ordinance providing for the auctioning of certain personal property and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion in second to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third and final reading by title only?
Make a motion.
Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? Your motion carried. An ordinance providing for the auctioning of certain personal property and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion in second to adopt the ordinance? Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? The motion is carried. And it is assigned number 2014-04. Do I have a motion in second to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
Make a motion.
Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles?
Yes.
Kind of hard for me to keep up with myself. You have in your packets the annual cleanup ordinance for the 2013 city budget. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance for its first reading? An ordinance amending ordinance number 2013-01 in the budget for the city of Melbourne for the year 2013 declaring an emergency. Whereas it is necessary to amend ordinance number 2013-01 in the budget for the city of Melbourne for the year 2013. And whereas it is necessary to make additional appropriations and adjustments to the 2013 budget for the city of Melbourne, Arkansas. Now therefore be it ordained by the Melbourne City Council, section one, that section one of ordinance number 2013-01 be amended to read as follows. Category of expenditures: General Fund Executive 333-20780, City Clerk Finance 31906701, Judicial 234-88683, Police Department 1,631,78767, Animal Control PD 6640830, Jail PD 15,000, Fire Department 1,95,929.25, Airport 25,300, Cemetery 8,500, Building Department 249,45891, Parks Department 117,1675, Solid Waste 437,000, Police Department Grant Fund Zero, Tennis Courts 4,025, Community Center 43,460, Boys and Girls Sports Complex 38,000, Wasatch Lake River Park 575. Wasatch Lake River Park Fund Zero, Street Fund 1,026,147. Intoxymeters Zero. City Sales Tax Fund 1,780,000. County Sales Tax Fund 849,46664. Administration of Justice Fund 400,000. Fire Insurance Turn Match 20,000. Uday 2-0, case number 8963-0. District Court Civil and Small Claims 358. Police Block Grant 5,35191. Seized and forfeited property 47119. Fire Equipment Donations 3,500. Clearing Account 3,193,020. Imaging Camera Fund 2100. Boys and Girls Club Complex 6,32447. District Court Automation 8,000. Firefighter Grant Zero. Library Tax Fund 1,00639. Airport Grant Zero. Emergency Vehicle Fund at 988 of 1991, 29,000. Section two, all ordinances, agreements, and parts of ordinances and agreements in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, it is necessary that this ordinance shall become effective immediately in order to provide for the prompt computation and payment of the cost of operating the various departments of the city of Melbourne. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist. And that this ordinance being necessary for the immediate protection of the public peace, health, and safety shall take effect immediately upon its passage and approval. The changes have been made to the budget. This, these are things that have to be done for the auditor. So we can either read it for the second reading next month or we can go ahead and pass it tonight. It's your pleasure. Want to do it next month?
I'd rather go ahead and place it on second, read it by title only.
Second. Got two seconds.
Okay, is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? An ordinance amending ordinance number 2013-01 in the budget for the city of Melbourne for the year 2013 declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion for the third reading?
So move.
Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? Do I have a motion? Oh wait, I gotta read it. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2013-01 in the budget for the city of Melbourne for the year 2013 declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion in second to adopt the ordinance?
Make a motion.
Is there any discussion?
For the benefit of the public, we should explain one more time what this is for. I mean, I know the council knows, but...
Anytime we buy something that wasn't budgeted for the year and it changes the bottom line on the budget, we have to amend the budget ordinance to show that purchase. Or that can happen also if someone overspends their budget. We had very little of that this year, but we did buy some things that we didn't budget before the year started. So this is just to clean up and make sure the budget figures match what was actually expended for the year.
Did we vote on that?
We did the third reading.
Okay, we didn't vote. Okay. We're voting to adopt the ordinance. Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? Okay, the ordinance is adopted and declared 2014-05. And I don't think the emergency clause is necessary. Your packets had a resolution condemning the streets located at 205 Banks, 1116 Kelly, and 910 Morzett Streets in the city of Melbourne. Would someone like to introduce that resolution?
Introduction made.
A resolution declaring certain properties in the city of Melbourne, Arkansas as an unfit and unsafe structure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Melbourne City Council as follows. Section one, that the following structure listed below has been declared by the Melbourne City Council is unsafe, unsanitary, unfit for human habitation, or not provided with adequate egress or which constitute a fire hazard or which in relation to existing use constitute a hazard to safety or health by reason of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment according to the Standard Housing Code, section 103.2, adopted by the city of Melbourne in ordinance number 2006, adopted July 12, 1999. Property number one is 205 Bank Street. Property number two is 1116 Kelly. Property number three is 910 Morzett Street. Do I have a motion in second to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? Motion is carried and it is assigned number 03-2014. Your packets have an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Melbourne for the purchase of a mower for use on softball and tee ball fields as recommended by the Finance Committee. Attorney Graham, do you have anything you want to say about that?
Yeah, I, you know, I just basically set this up to indemnify the city and if an employee or something over there hurt someone or damaged something with the mower. I did it for perpetually renewing terms of three years, which we could, we could change that if we want, even, even a year. But I set it up to where at the end of the three years, if Melbourne wanted it back, we could just give them notice and take it back. Prohibits them obviously from selling it or doing anything with it and requires that they maintain it per factory specification recommendations during it. And also keeps some sort of insurance that would cover if someone got hurt using it. But basically, the only thing we may need to tweak would be the term.
Do I hear a motion in second to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club?
Make a motion.
Do we need to include the term in that motion?
I think it's, it's in there. It's three.
It's in there. It's three. But we may want to do, change it to one.
I'd rather we amend the motion or the agreement to make it a one-year.
Y'all withdraw your motion in a second. Okay. Okay. Do I have a second to Alderman Reynolds' motion? Okay, that will be to amend it to a one-year agreement. Is there any discussion?
I need to also, I don't know who can acquire the VIN numbers for me for the Dixie Chopper and the front runner, but they're listed, Glenn. Okay, can you get me those? Okay, we gotta put those in there too.
Okay. Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? Okay, the motion is to amend, that was to amend the agreement. Now do I have a motion in second to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
Make a motion. As amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? Presentation was made at the Finance Committee meeting on the 2013 Water and Sewer Department audit. Do I have a motion in second to accept the recommendation from the Finance Committee and accept the audit report as presented by the audit firm of Taylor Rogers Turner &amp; Manning, PLLC?
Move to approve the audit.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would point out again for the benefit of the public that this audit was thoroughly reviewed by the Finance Committee. We've gone over every item on it. And I think they did a good job.
Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? The Finance Committee has recommended extending the contract for audit services of the Water and Sewer Department with the firm of Taylor Rogers Turner &amp; Manning for the coming year. Do I hear a motion in second to extend the contract for audit services with their firm?
Make a motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? Fraction? Wilson? Gladwell? Reynolds? Lou Singer? Halbert? Stiles? I'm going to turn the floor over to Fire Chief Harper who has a report on the financing options for the purchase of a new fire truck.
Excuse me, if I don't speak very clearly. I've been knocked down with a cold the last few days. I delivered to you Saturday the information that I had received from local banks that I was charged with Monday night checking local banks on if they would finance us the money in hold to purchase the fire truck. I did receive answer from a couple of banks that would loan us the money without collateral. Those two being Melbourne National and Summit. The other bank statements here you see, well, farmers did and did not. If you can read in their deal, it kind of is, I'm gonna spread out here. It was kind of one of those, we will, but it might not be a great idea, but we'll do it anyways, kind of, you know. Again, I think that will. The main deal that I've noticed with the local banks is the compounding of the interest and the difference with the Pierce manufacturing. And basically, the closest one that we came up with was US Bancorp had the lowest interest rate. However, by compounding their interest annually, we would be paying a total $82,360 from Pierce and it'd be $84,838. So $2,200 a year would be almost $11,000 more to go with US Banc at the lower rate. The other banks were similar in how they were doing their amortization schedules on the deal with the Pierce. Just didn't do that. They just did a one, single computation of the interest rate. So that's why the whole interest on the truck for Pierce is, the total, the total interest for the truck is $10,000, which is 2.6% of the $400,000 loan. So with that, like I said, I'm getting out of wind. I'm not making, not making air too well tonight. But with that being said, most of, all the local banks I checked with, again, I had some that would not necessarily loan without collateral, but they would with a CD. However, I'm not in any kind of liberty to talk about our CDs or CD situations or anything like that. But I did just ask so that, because I know it was mentioned in the Finance meeting. So you have some of that information in there as well, which again is anywhere from 1.75% to 2% over what the CD pays, which would again put us in a higher interest rate bracket from what we would be getting. And again, talking about possibility of moving CDs and taking penalties to move CDs and such as that. Philis can tell you more about that. So from what I found, you know, all the banks weren't willing to work with us. It's just, you know, we're talking anywhere from $10,000 to $17,000 more to go with the local bank. But that's up to y'all.
I'm just gonna open it up for discussion.
On another note, y'all will find, I did an ordinance for Pierce Oshkosh Financing. The statute, the state statute requires that the ordinance contain all the specific terms, basically how the deal is going to be set up. With the banks, there are so many of them with so many different interest rates and things of that nature. I have one sitting at the office with a bunch of blanks. But whether or not we're gonna have to put a CD as collateral and things of that nature would all have need to be in the ordinance. So if we want to go with local banks, I don't know, we might have a special meeting or something like that to pass it if we want to get it done quickly. Because we'd A, have to decide on the bank and B, then have them give us a specific printout or the exact terms. Because they're supposed to be sitting in front of you guys when you make the decision to pass the ordinance.
Who are the two banks again? The ones that financed with that?
Melbourne National Bank just straight said, yes, they would. Summit was really working on trying to find ways to say that, yes, they could, but didn't necessarily absolutely say, yes, we definitely will. Neither did Farmers. But they were definitely willing to. The other banks were pretty much, well, US Banc said, yes, they do. But by the time I talked to somebody in Ohio and the paperwork I got, it shows the collateral, you know, the deal there's having collateral. So I take that as there will be, would need to be collateral. So those banks wouldn't need collateral. Wouldn't be exactly meeting the terms that we discussed. But I tried to get a payment schedule from every one of them and I could not get one from every one of them. But again, it's just, you know, going back and forth trying to contact everybody. But again, that's the, like I said, with the one that the lowest, at the 1.99, you can still see that the payment is, I mean, that's the lowest payment of the one that I got amortized out. And it's still gonna be higher than what the Pierce one is.
When I make sure I understand the Pierce.
Or when I say Pierce, it's Oshkosh County.
Oshkosh, yeah. They're saying we pay $85,000. Then we make the five annual payments. The cost of the unit is $485,000 roughly. So, but then they make a, this comment here that says the full payment at the time of signing contract the cost of the unit would now be $463,000.
I think, I think that...
I don't see that.
I think that may be a typo. It's supposed to be 399, I think. 399 something.
Where you say that?
The emergency vehicle, restlessness. Was attached for the period on mine.
Okay, okay. So the cost of unit 44, what that, what that is, that payment due to... Okay, so the, the cost of unit forty-four, what that, what that is, that payment due at delivery? That was if we chose to only make the eighty-five thousand and wait till the truck delivered, that's what we would owe. If we waited the ten months and paid the rest of it. That would, that's, that's where we're losing the twenty thousand dollars. If we pay the full cost of unit at four eighty-four, that next paragraph, that's where we get the savings cost of twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. If we only pay eighty-five thousand down, then we only save forty-five hundred dollars. That's what that second sheet.
And then when the vehicle was delivered, we would then pay the remainder or-
Yeah, if we chose, if we chose to just pay the eighty-five, then we would pay the remainder of three ninety-five, one eighty-three upon delivery. But that's where the, the number changes, because then at that point, we don't get that twenty thousand dollar savings. The four sixty-three is what the truck would actually be cost, because they're gonna give us the twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars off as a cash payment, you know, basically cash price that we're gonna use for equipment that we'll put back onto the truck. So, the truck would still remain the four eighty-four, since we're gonna have twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment to be able to put on it. If we choose to pay for it upfront, if we don't, then we'll, we'll lose that equipment.
So, it's not, it's not a cash discount?
It's, it, it is and it isn't. I mean, that twenty thousand dollars is we paid upfront. So, if we go with Oshkosh, Oshkosh writes Pierce a check, just like if we went with a bank that'll write the Pierce a check.
For four eighty-four.
For four eight, well, for four hundred, we've got eight, we've got eighty-five budgeted that we're gonna spend out of the city coff- yeah, but yes, sir, four eighty-four total would be the money that we get, four hundred from Oshkosh and eighty-four from the city.
And we will pay back four eighty-four.
Well, we'll pay back-
Our loan will be based on four eighty-four, not four sixty-three.
No, it'll be lo- our loan will be based on four hundred.
Uh, well.
Right, it's, yeah, it's, because we're making it, we're making a down payment, so to speak, of eighty-five thousand. No matter, no matter who we go with, we're making a down payment of eighty-five thousand, and the financing of the four hundred. Or the three ninety-
Three ninety-nine, whatever.
Yeah, three ninety-five, one eighty-three, sixty-one. Or three nine, no, three ninety-nine is correct. So, uh, and again, that's what, no matter how, how we go with, if we pay for it upfront, we'll get the twenty thousand dollar savings as a, as a cash price, so to speak.
If we're gonna pay the full amount, we're gonna have to borrow the money from sunlight.
Right, yes, sir. From Oshkosh or a local bank. Let's do have the money in the budget to make that annual payment. And that, that money y'all-
As of right now, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm like, it's in the budget. If we opted to pay the eighty-five thousand and the remainder upon delivery, or to finance at the time of delivery, then we would not have to have an ordinance until the truck is delivered.
I, I think since it's gonna be a tax exempt thing, we have to have an ordinance. I'm not, I'm not-
We're gonna have an ordinance, but-
Sure, but you're saying making, if we made the down payment right now, since it's in the budget, not having to have an ordinance.
So, we're paying it. No banks involved, no financing involved.
Um, do you guys have that statute, I think I left it at the office, do you have a copy of that statute?
I don't think I have.
About the, the city-
No, sir, I don't have a copy of the statute.
The, the statute in question, I think, is if we become indebted in some way. Well, another difference between the lease with the purchase with the one dollar purchase option at the end, um, I don't believe it goes on the city's books as being a debt, because we can stop the lease and not make that payment anytime we want. Whereas if we take out a loan from the bank, it affects the city's debt to asset ratio, because it's gonna go on there as a debt. And I, you know, it's another thing we have to consider, but, um, I, I, to be honest with you, I would have to, Wayne, I'd have to check in, uh, to see if that's the case. I, I know, under the specific statute we're working, it governs indebted, you know, indebtedness, that the, the city issues an obligation or something of that nature. So, if it's just in the budget, then we're not issuing an obligation, I would say technically you'd be correct.
Because it depends on what type of an agreement we have to enter into with-
With Pierce.
With Pierce.
Yeah, I mean, if the city says, if the city, if it's just a lease, then I think you're, you're right. But if we're saying, we're purchasing this vehicle, and we're gonna do six payments at eighty-five thousand, like we were going down to the car lot and buying it, then I think we would have, have to have an ordinance. But with a lease and a purchase, I, I don't know that we would. I don't, I mean, that would be the only way we would have to go in there.
So, is your understanding then that, uh, in the event we paid eighty-five thousand now and then waited and financed with Oshkosh and when the pickup vehicle was delivered, we'd lose the twenty thousand?
Right.
Yes, sir, we'll lose the twenty thousand.
Why?
Cause it's not pre, it's not a full prepay at that point. We're just making a partial prepay. We'll, we'll gain four thousand dollars. If we, if we paid the eighty-five thousand, that's what that, that first estimate there is on the top of the EBS paperwork. Cause instead of being three ninety-nine do at delivery, it would be three ninety-five, cause they're, they're removing the four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollar. And the only thing I can see with that, Alderman Reynolds is, is if we wait and finance next year, I mean, I don't know what the interest rates will be at that point. I know they won't be-
They're going up.
I know they probably won't be lower, but I don't know how much. If I knew how much they're going up, I probably wouldn't be a fire chief.
Are we, are we, in a situation like that, is, is, is it your understanding that Oshkosh would finance at that point?
I'm not sure. I mean, I, I didn't ask them if they would finance upon delivery, um,
Did the sheet they gave us says-
Because essentially, I think it'd be the same as this financing now with Oshkosh, cause Oshkosh is-
They're just another loan company.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, they're a capital company that owns, you know, the truck company, so, I mean, they're, you know, I'm-
So, we would have to go with whatever interest rate they offer, just that, that's like we would with-
Just like we would with the bank.
Yeah, I think the, uh, sheet that Oshkosh gave has a period of time that offer's good for-
Oh, yeah, this offer's good for sixty days, which most of the, most of the bank offers does sixty days, I mean, everything's got time, man.
Sixty days, you start in when?
Uh, this was, uh-
Last week?
March seventh.
March seventh. Yeah, with, with, uh, with Pierce and Oshkosh, it started March seventh, on that delivery of paperwork.
Forty-five days ago.
And I, I think it's already like, about like two seven now or something, but that's, we're still.
Jimmy, how much additional will it cost to outfit the truck? To put the equipment on it that it'll need?
We're gonna reuse a lot of equipment, but, I mean, the twenty thousand dollars up is, is basically, we're gonna buy the fire hose that goes on, we use LDH hoses on the back of the truck for our water supply, which is four inch hose. It costs a thousand dollars a section, we put twelve hundred feet on the truck. This truck will be the last one that needs that hose put on it. So, I mean, that's twelve thousand dollars just for the hose, the supply line on the back. Um, things like the, the power equipment on the truck, we'll need a generator, we'll, we'll purchase a, you know, a Honda generator for the truck, we'll purchase a power, power fan that we use, positive pressure fan that we use for, uh, removing smoke and ventilating house fires. Those usually run about two thousand dollars, so I'm in, just with that equipment, we're already at about, you know, eighteen thousand dollars. And that's not, I mean, I mean, we're not talking about, and now stuff like ladders and axes and stuff like that comes on, uh, that comes with the truck. But the, uh, but once you start talking loose equipment like our air packs, I mean, no, I mean, we, we, we won't be purchasing those, cause that's, an air pack's nearly five thousand dollars a piece, so. We'll be putting probably about a hundred thousand dollars worth of our equipment on it, that we currently own. But some of the things that we've been using, that's been on that truck for years, that we'll be replacing and retiring as it goes out to. Mostly the motorized equipment. Generators, fans, saws, things like that's what we'll, we'll look and replace.
The one of the other options is that we pay, pay in full in, in advance and get the same deal.
With borrow money? Yes, sir. And if we, if we did that, then I mean, that would eliminate my line on from a budget. I mean, you know, when I came, when we came in a budget, that was the main reason for, for trying to put the line item in there, is that we would be on a five-year, we'd be purchasing, repurchasing a truck every five years. We have, you know, four engines that we run an hour, if we buy one every five years, that'll put us on a twenty-year rotation, which is ideally, city our size, fifteen to twenty years is what we need to be replacing that brass. So, you know, with our run volumes and things like that, so. So, you know, twenty years is a good, you know, good, good stepping off point, I think, for us to be on a rotation of it.
I think-
So, if we purchased it, then I mean, that would eliminate the, the line item unless we opened an account and did something else.
I think another, um, thing you have to consider doing that, Wayne, is if the city was wanting to replace that later by borrowing money, um, the fact that it's money for a fire truck makes it tax exempt for the banks, which allows them to give us those low, low interest rates. Uh, if we pay for the fire truck and then borrow it back, just as like general capital, um, I do not believe that the, the bank would, would get a tax exempt. So, it likely be at a much higher interest rate, probably around three percent instead of one point nine or something.
I'm not sure on that. You have questions, Styles?
They may be able to pass the buck along, you know, through the, through the, the woods.
We're gonna, you said we was gonna pay eighty-five thousand, yardage?
Yes.
So, if I pay the remainder, and then we pay them back, right?
Yes, sir.
So, it says with a full payment, uh, at the signing of the contract, the cost of the unit would be four sixty-three.
Right, yes, sir.
If you deduct eighty, or if you deduct eighty-five from that, that we're gonna pay, then that, the balance then would be three seventy-eight, nine sixty.
I'll have to add it up, we'll see.
I think even though we're getting the twenty thousand dollar discount, we're still borrowing back that twenty thousand to put into the truck.
That's what I'm having trouble with, I don't see the discount, I don't see the twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars apparently is any extra equipment, I mean, you're just buying a-
Well, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep the, I mean,
You're borrowing the full amount regardless if you're getting the twenty thousand dollar discount.
We're getting- Right, we're borrowing the full amount. I mean, even with the discount, the whole discount is, we're getting the equipment. I, I mean, we're using the discount, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Be like, we're gonna buy a pickup truck, we're gonna pay cash for it, and they say, well, we'll knock two thousand dollars off, and you say, well, I want these upgraded tires and-
The truck, as it's gonna be delivered, there won't be a twenty thousand dollar discount.
Okay. I, I may have been making that kind of, cause that's, it is a discount, but we're basically, we're gonna get twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment. So, that's basically what it breaks down to. So, the, so the amount, yes, sir, was gonna be four eighty-four.
So, where you can get the cash?
Only if we pay them cash and get cash, I don't know. Which I guess I'll give you eighty, if you give me twenty, I mean, I-
Instead of getting the equipment there, was also making a tax-
Right, but getting the, getting the equipment on the truck makes it tax exempt, because the fire truck is tax exempt. So, that twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment we're getting on there is not gonna have taxes on it.
So, if you can-
Still trying to get this straight. If we bought the truck for four hundred and sixty-three thousand like they say we could, it wouldn't have the equipment that you want on it?
No, sir, it won't have anything on it. And I'll have to, I mean, I'll have to purchase the hose and some of this equipment.
All right, so then you turn around and buy twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment with taxes on it?
Right, yes, sir. And I mean, I'll have to use my, my insurance turnback dollars to do that, we don't have that much.
If, if, if we just paid four sixty-three and, and put the equipment you need on there, could we do it for twenty thousand dollars? I'd rather just take twenty thousand out of your budget and not pay interest on that twenty.
If you did it at the same time, right, same time you purchased the truck?
Are you getting a better deal on the equipment at twenty thousand, is what I'm saying?
I'm getting a better deal on the equipment, I mean-
You couldn't go out-
I can't go out and buy it.
In other words, if I, if I go out and buy twenty thousand equipment, I'm gonna get less equipment. Okay.
Yeah. Like I say, it's a, well, even, even outside the tax exemption, we're gonna get it. We're gonna get it at the dealership instead.
Yeah, I'm guessing Pierce is selling the equipment too, so.
Some of it, some of it's actually coming from places that are around them. Like our, our T S schools and things like that. The biggest thing is, as long as it's attached to the truck when it's delivered, it's tax exempt. So, that's the, that's still like the hose, I mean, it's just gonna be in boxes, it's gonna be thought of in the truck, but it's on the truck. Or like, if I go pick it up on my pickup truck, then we're paying more for it.
So, bottom line is, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pay for it.
We're, yes, sir.
That's the bottom line.
Yes, sir, bottom line's four eighty-four, we're gonna, with that four eighty-four, we're getting twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment. Four hundred and sixty-four is the truck, or sixty-three. And this is to go at the North Station. Next to, next to Larry and David and Luke's house.
Is that where the current, the one that's about to break down is at, too, over there?
Uh, yes, sir. And, and the biggest reason for that is, it's not, it's not that, that's, you know, it's just that that's the only station.
And she, she caught on fire there today too, right?
Well, the, the station there is, as y'all know, was built in fifty-three. And even when it was remodeled, they remodeled the extra bay the same size as they had them in fifty-three. Well, trucks in nineteen fifty-three were fitting in here. And, uh, if you've seen Engine Four, been up close to it, you know you couldn't back it in here. So, the thing is, is the commercial cans are too big, the commercial trucks have just steadily gotten taller and taller. So, even if I wanted to move Engine Four over there, I can't, we'd have to park it outside. So, that's part of the purpose of this truck, being more expensive, is it's a custom-built truck to fit in our station too. I mean, this is the New York-style truck for old stations, that they're squat-bodied, they're wide, they're squared, so that they fit exactly in the hole, so you can put ten pounds of stuff in a five-pound box. That's, that's part of the reason with, with North Mountain, we can't, we can't maneuver another truck over there, it's just the size of the station, the age of the building. And I've looked at trying to revamp the doors, and that's, that's not really an option, all we can make up is about eight inches without totally jacking the roof.
Well, it appears to me the best deal we're getting is with, with Oshkosh.
Now, there is with, with, with the truck, the purchase of the truck and everything, and I told the bases, well, there's a performance bond, everything with, with Pierce. Not like, I mean, there's performance bonds on the truck that they, you know, that will do it signing, the mayor, when he signs the stuff. That's, you know, if anything happens, plant burns down, go bankrupt or whatever, we get our money back, so. We will have performance bonds on, on the truck and everything as well.
Now, is that our, is that our cost?
Oh, sir, that's in the, that's, that's in the deal.
That's in the deal.
That's, that's, that's their boilerplate, it's in their, it's in their contract. It's their performance bond. Which Pierce Apparatus, I know y'all familiar with fire truck stuff, but Pierce is the, they're the largest fire apparatus manufacturers in the world, so I mean, I don't really figure their- When we were up there, they were building thirty trucks and shipping them to China. So. One of the neatest thing I took a picture of is everything in there, some Chinese, but it had a little deal over the steering wheel, said made in America by people who care. Thought I figured that probably the first thing that took off. Probably kinda like we scratched the made in China sticker off. But, uh, but they are, I mean, they, they've been in, uh, they've been in business for over a hundred years and stuff, so I mean, they're, they're a real record boy, fire truck company. There's not a lot of fire truck companies in Arkansas, well, there's none in Arkansas, but in the United States that make that many trucks, and it's, and there's, there's about seven, but the problem is, there's only about three that actually deal around in Arkansas. And, uh, and Pierce is one of the best ones as far as all their service, and their service, their shops in Conway and stuff like that, so it's close enough to, to get to and work with. Cause even one of the other truck companies that works here, um, their, their shops in Mississippi, so I mean, it's just, if you imagine trying to ship a fire truck, you get it worked on, something simple, you gotta send it to Mississippi, that's not gonna be a twenty-four hour downtime. So, a lot of what we look at is the service we can get after the sale.
Well, they're made a little easier to deal with, they're, they're a little different. When they said the cost of the unit's four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, and you get it at four sixty-three, and that's not, not exactly the way it is, that's, and the savings really is not a savings, it's additional equipment you're getting on a truck that you might have got.
And that's mainly cause the, the fire chief said, we're gonna put, put some equipment on the truck.
So, if you didn't get any equipment, they would say three, four sixty-three?
They would say four sixty-three. But we, I mean, but again, we, we have to have the equipment, I don't, I mean, and, and part of that's our ISO stuff as well, is the reason we gotta have that large hose. And we've got one truck right now that doesn't have large hoses on it, and so, if we were actually graded by the large diameter hose stuff, we wouldn't even get to count one truck, because we have one that doesn't have it on there. So, but I haven't spent twelve thousand dollars for just that yet, so. So, that was what I was waiting on, this opportunity to get the truck, get it all done at one time.
So, basically, what we're saying, if we do, do this, that we are getting twenty thousand dollar worth of equipment, if you don't think you can buy and put on?
Right. Taxes in. So, roughly saving. So roughly saving, you know, two thousand dollars worth of equipment, just from taxes.
Then the ordinance you've got written is?
It's for Oshkosh. They're the, they're the only ones that had the set terms, um, and it, the way it is, it's a little simpler than what we'd be doing through a, through a bank. I could, I could do it, I mean, if, if I knew which bank y'all wanted to go with, I could have it for you guys by tomorrow. Like, say, we might have to do a special meeting or something to get it pushed through, to get, get the truck on the production line, but, I mean, we can make it happen if you wanna do it.
But if we go ahead with this ordinance that you've drafted here, we can go ahead and get this thing moving.
I think Oshkosh would send an agreement over, um, post haste.
We could, we could get things going within a week.
Now, Chief, you're saying that Oshkosh, their interest rate is gonna be ten or seventeen thousand dollars cheaper than any of the banks you've, we've talked to?
Well, the way they're amortizing out the payments, is what, what it come down to?
Ten to seventeen thousand.
Depending on the bank.
Yes, sir. The lowest one I got was, was from, uh. U S Bank. It was, it was four hundred and eighty-four thousand. So, or I mean, eighty-four thousand a year, so, um, again, you're talking twenty-two hundred dollars.
Per year.
Twenty, four hundred dollars a year.
Which is a little over one thousand.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move without the ordinance.
Want to introduce it?
Read it, sir. Yeah, you gotta read it, huh?
Yep. I'm about to get tired of reading, too. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement for the purchase of a fire rescue vehicle for use by the Malvern Fire Department outlining the terms of said lease agreement declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Malvern is a city of the first class of the state of Arkansas and is duly organized and existing pursuant to the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas. Whereas pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated, subsection fourteen dash seven eight dash one oh three, the city council of the city is authorized to acquire, dispose of, and encumber real and personal property, including without limitation rights and interest in property leases and necessary to the functions or operations of the city. Whereas the city finds, hereby finds and determines that the execution of one or more master lease purchase agreements in the principal amount of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-three cents for the purpose of acquiring a fire rescue vehicle is appropriate and necessary to the functions and operations of the city. The full purchase price of the vehicle should be four hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-one fifty-three, with eighty-five thousand to be paid upon signing of the lease agreement, with the remainder of purchase price, three ninety-nine, six eighty-one fifty-three, due in five annual payments of eighty-two thousand, three sixty, forty-seven, with a two-point-six-three percent interest rate. Whereas Oshkosh Capital shall act as lessor under said lease. Whereas said lease shall be a tax-exempted lease purchase agreement with a one-dollar buyout option at the end of the lease. Title to the fire rescue vehicle shall vest in the city during the penancy of the lease purchase agreement, with lessor being granted a first security interest against the vehicle. City shall be responsible for all cost of operation, maintenance, upkeep, insurance, and taxes related to the vehicle during the penancy of the lease purchase agreement. Whereas the fire rescue vehicle shall be purchased for use by the Malvern Fire Department in fighting fires, responding to emergencies, and carrying out various other duties and obligations now therefore being ordained by the Malvern City Council of the City of Malvern, Arkansas. Section one, either the mayor or fire chief, authorized representative acting on behalf of the city, is hereby authorized to negotiate, enter, into, execute, and deliver one or more leases in substantially the form set forth in the document, like, document presently before the city council, which document is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Each authorized representative acting on behalf of the city is hereby authorized to negotiate, enter into, execute, and deliver such other documents relating to the lease as the authorized representative deems necessary and appropriate. All other related contracts and agreements necessary and incidental to the leases are hereby authorized. Section two, by written, by a written instrument signed by any authorized representative, said authorized representative may designate specifically identified officers or employees of the city to execute and deliver agreements and documents relating to the leases on behalf of the city. Section three, the aggregate original principal amount of the lease shall not exceed four hundred and eighty-four thousand, six eighty-one fifty-three, eighty-five thousand down with the remaining three ninety-nine, six eighty-one fifty-three to be paid in five annual payments of eighty-two thousand, three sixty, forty-seven, and shall bear interest at a rate of not more than two-point-six-three percent. And the leases shall contain an option to purchase, which allows the city to purchase a vehicle for the sum of one dollar at the conclusion of the lease term. Section four, the municipality's obligations under the lease shall be subject to annual appropriation and renewal by the city council as set forth in each lease, and the city's obligations under the lease shall not constitute, in general obligations of the city or indebtedness under the constitutional or laws of the state. As to, section five, as to the lease, the municipality reasonably anticipates it will not issue tax-exempt obligations that exceed five percent of the assessed value of taxable property located within the city other than private activity bonds, which are not qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. During the calendar year in which each such lease is issued and hereby designates each lease as qualified tax-exempt obligation for the purposes of section two, six, five, B, of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six is amended, this obligation is not a revenue bond and shall not be deemed as such for purposes of any statute. Section si- six, in having been found and determined that the Malvern Fire Department does not have an adequate number of appropriate and functional fire vehicles within the city limits of Malvern, Arkansas, and if this absence of suitable equipment may result in a condition menacing to the public peace, health, and safety, and therefore an emergency exists, and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, same shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. Do I hear a motion in second to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its second reading by title only? Make motion.
Second.
Sure, you don't worry about anything.
Not sure. Is there any discussion?
I would, I would, uh, ask one question, and I think I know the answer. Outstanding debt of the city of Malvern?
Hmm.
Do we have any?
Oh, do we have any outstanding debt currently? I don't have the bill listed.
I don't think we do.
I would like to make that point.
Oh, okay. I was like, you're not missing something.
And, and this won't be included in such, because the fourth year, we could say, ah, we don't want it.
Fraction?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladwell?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Lou Singer?
Yes.
Halber?
Yes.
Styles?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement for the purchase of a fire rescue vehicle for use by the Malvern Fire Department outlining the terms of said lease agreement declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Uh, do I have a motion in second to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third and final reading by title only? So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would say I wouldn't include from the Water Department.
Fraction?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladwell?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Lou Singer?
Yes.
Halber?
Yes.
Styles?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement for the purchase of a fire rescue vehicle for use by the Malvern Fire Department outlining the terms of said lease agreement declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Uh, do I have a motion in second to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Fraction?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladwell?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Lou Singer?
Yes.
Halber?
Yes.
Styles?
Yes.
Um, the motion carries, the ordinance is assigned two oh one four dash zero six.
Thank you, Castle. I have more questions.
Not for you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Do I have a motion in second to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion? Fraction?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gladwell?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Lou Singer?
Yes.
Halber?
Yes.
Styles?
Yes.
The motion is carried. We have no citizens wishing to appear, now mayor reports, do I have a motion in second to adjourn?
We did have a citizen that sent a letter to everybody on the council.
Yes, yes. Do I have a motion in second to adjourn?
Move adjourn.